Please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lark.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons. Bowman.
Here.
All right. I'm gonna, we're gonna go through the consent agenda and the reports from staff and the remarks from citizens and then we'll do a recess and go to the other agendas to get porking out of here. But. Item four, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting, January 16th, 2024. Approval of claims in the amount of $270,006.76 and payroll expenses of $239,083.71.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
All right. Reports from staff. There was no planning commission meeting. Item B is Alba Hospital Authority Meeting on January 29th. Mr. Bowman.
Okay, this is for our meeting on 1/29 at 24. They had a kickoff meeting for the Senior Life Solutions Group. The sale of the nursing home is still with the attorneys. Dr. Roberts, he's the surgeon from Tulsa that's going to be starting the 19th, so he's passed everything. Dr. Tucker, Tucker, the other surgeon, is at max capacity and the new mammogram machine should arrive in mid-March.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Same question.
Any idea what the holdup is with the sale as far as what the legal remains in service?
Do you care?
So, the hospital board hired an attorney to do the sale on that property. As I was reviewing things, saw that the previous contract that was originally land and everything given to the city to lease to the hospital. So that is likely something that we would have to put forward to a vote of the people. So we're trying to figure out kind of all the process with that and how we need to get that out there.
Any other questions regarding the hospital board meeting? All right. Next item is the library board meeting. Mr. Dowling.
Unfortunately, because of a lack of a forum, the library board was not able to meet. But I did get some highlights that February 26th and February 27th, they're gonna celebrate the library's birthday, so they invite everybody on Monday for cake, coffee, and then on Tuesday for cookies.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dowling? There was no arena authority meeting, Tourism Tax Commission meeting from January 20, or January 17th. Mrs. Beer.
We had one item and it was for the lieutenant governor's turkey hunt coming up. That was approved and we meet again tomorrow at 5:30. Basically it.
All right. Are there any questions for Mrs. Beer?
Have you guys already talked about NESCOT on this?
That is actually tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yep, they're on our agenda.
Okay.
We have like eight tomorrow.
Any other questions regarding tourism? Thank you. Was no Board of Adjustments meeting, the Airport Commission meeting from February 12th. There was one item in addition to routine business and that was remarks from John Wiener regarding the fuel truck. Just chairing the council. The fuel truck for the airport were ordered in September, October, somewhere in there. And issues with the manufacturer and for the parts to be able to mount our fuel tanks on them have slowed that project down. It's not inconsistent with maybe what we're seeing in other projects where we're needing to order materials and supplies as well. So we are hopeful that the fuel tanker will be back, or will have one back on the airport grounds soon. But we're still waiting on that. Any questions regarding the airport meeting? Next item, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on February 14th. Mrs. Swallow.
Okay, the turf project is going well. We discussed the drainage issues that having on the project. We're waiting on further information, so no action was taken, but the most important thing we did was approved all the alternate bids for the pool.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? All right. And Mr. Winters, Finance Committee meeting, February 20th.
So we met, we had some more discussion on CDs. City has a lot of CDs compared to where we've been in the past, so it's gonna probably be an almost monthly thing. But at least for a while, we were doing some shorter terms on our CDs because of rates and fluctuations in rates and so that kind of made them come due pretty regularly. Some of those fall for the airport, so they're, we're getting their recommendation how they wanna approach those, as well as there was one for the, what was the other one?
Tourism.
Tourism. And so waiting on that kind of how tomorrow goes and funding and if they, you know, are gonna need those funds or not. The rest of it, everything financially for the city is still looking really positively. We budgeted for $312,000 a month in sales and use tax collections. We consistently hit around $400,000 a month, which is really positive. Overall, we've collected only about 51.5% of budgeted revenue for the city, but we've expended about 56%. With that said, we did expect to expend more than collected throughout the year because we had some fund balance left over from last year, so that's not terribly concerning. Like I said, we've been ahead on collections. So that's kind of the major highlights. The rest of it is in the report. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Winters? As far as the mayor's report, I was honored to have Mrs. Swallow and Mrs. Beer join the Congress of Mayors this year. It was, I think for me, it's one of my favorite events that the league and the, or the mayor's council put on every year in terms of being educated on the legislative process, as well as some of the items that are affecting municipalities across the state. And that's it. Are there any questions? Okay. Business managers' report.
Survey's favorite project is still ongoing on Locust Street. We're about 90% done with the digging on 700 block. I think they'd ever boss it much quicker, get that all dug out, a few of those driveways to go under, over, through. We're still gonna get the 700 blocks done with minimal contract involvement. Tonight you'll have something coming in front of you to get a contractor to do the 900 and 1000 block, which when we can kind of come together, kind of like the two railroads back in the day, when they meet in the middle, we can tie it all in at one time and turn all four blocks on at once, instead of kind of doing it incrementally, so we think that'll be a positive. New meter install is still going. We now have our third install crew in town. When they started, they had 221 left to do, we're down to 135. 120 small and 15 large, but these guys actually work for the company that is the contractor, so they're a little bit motivated and they're working pretty hard. We, I hate to throw out another time for me again, cause it's gonna be wrong, so they're just gonna get them done. Turf project is, as I saw mentioned, is going. A few weather delays for the factors, get this drainage figured out and that'll be back on track and up and running. Another public service announcement, the new website, the city app is live, so if you haven't downloaded the city app, please do. Turn on your push notifications, we try to send out any things going on via that, as well as Facebook. At the end of January, I attended the CMAO Order Conference in Edmond. A great event, I mean absolutely just a phenomenal education opportunity. I learned a ton and I had a great chance to network with a lot of folks that I hadn't met before. A little smaller event than OML where you can actually sit in a room and talk with other city managers and city clerks and treasurers and that kind of thing, really kind of get to know some folks. I think there's about 150 of us there, so a little smaller event, but it was, it was great. And I won a free pair of AirPods, which is cool, so. Swimming pool project's moving along very well. You've driven by there, you've noticed all the big, big demos done. I mean, they got in there and knocked that out. If you look, there's also some stakes in there where the pool company, the guys who are gonna do the actual pool work, have been there surveying and marking things out where the pool's gonna go and how things are gonna look, so. So that's moving along. We get this Land Water Conservation Fund grant and then we start on the pool house, the bathhouse as well. We got our bids back for the IT upgrade project. We're putting together a evaluation team to review the bid packets and make a recommendation to city council on which one to select. We'll see how it goes, whether or not we decide we wanna have the, either one or both companies come and do a presentation to city council so we can make an informed decision. But like I said, we'll see how the eval team goes and what they recommend. Another public service announcement, the Chamber of Commerce annual gala is April 4th. The awardee voting is out there, so be sure to get on the chamber website and go vote for your favorite. We do have two folks up for, I think, Public Safety Person of the Year. I saw some names, Bridget from EMS and Assistant Chief Holly from PD. And the Alworex Center is up for, I think, is it Entertainment Venue of the Year? So I said, go out there and vote, please. Well, it's gonna still budget season. I've gotta get with the mayor and probably everybody else here. Right now, according to our schedule, the budget retreat would be the Saturday of Easter weekend. My guess is it's probably better Saturday than Easter weekend, so I'll talk to the mayor and I'll probably send a note out to him and everybody else, try to get an idea of what other Saturday right close to that might work better. So we're not gonna interfere with anybody's Easter weekend. That'll be coming out there this week, so that's all I've got.
I failed to mention in the brief update on the pool, but I was supposed to make comment that Mrs. Swallow declined the opportunity to drive to Tracko on two separate occasions.
Yes, I did.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ford?
Did we ever collect the passenger rent over at the professional building?
Mayor and I just talked about that today. I'm gonna get with Angelica, make sure they're getting invoices and try to figure out if they are, if they need a payment plan, we gotta do, try to get them back on track.
All right, next one. Any other questions for Mr. Ford? Okay. Item seven, remarks and inquiries by citizens. All right, and now we'll recess city council and I'm gonna open the Economic Development Authority meeting. When you're ready, Heather, please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lark.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons. Bowman.
Here.
Okay. Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, January 16th, 2024, and special meeting held on January 30th, 2024. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $24,072.81 and payroll expenses of $18,918.54.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to approve the Alba Parks and Recreation Hatfield Park Aquatic Center alternate bids from Ascend Commercial Builders LLC as listed in the bidder's proposal. Item A, alternate bid AA. Number two, the construction of the site lighting as indicated on the electrical sheet, complete and in place in the amount of $86,250. Item B, alternate bid AA. Number three, the construction of the children's play structure, complete and in place in the amount of $276,199.25. Item C, alternate bid AA number four, the construction of the spray ground elements including water cannons, complete and in place in the amount of $104,257.85. Item D, alternate bid AA number five, the purchase and installation of floatable structures as shown on the SP sheets, complete and in place in the amount of $12,921.40. Item E, alternate bid AA number six, the construction of the 30-foot group shade structure including any foundation work, complete and in place in the amount of $54,165. And item F, alternate bid AA number seven, the construction of the climbing wall as indicated on the SP sheets, complete and in place in the amount of $31,427.20. All of these alternate bids have been funded by restricted gifts from donors in an amount equivalent or in excess of the total amount of all the alternate bids, including the alternate bid that was approved at the special meeting that we had. The Parks and Recreation Board did vote unanimously with the members present to recommend approval of all these items.
I'll make a motion to approve Alba Park and Rex Hatfield Park Aquatic Center alternate bids from Ascend Commercial Buildings LLC as listed in the bidder's proposals.
A second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Mrs. Bowman.
Mr. Bowman.
Tell Sarah, I prefer her to be here. Mr. Bowman. To approve the alternate bids from Ascend Commercial Builders LLC, items 5A through 5F, in the amounts specified in the agenda.
Adequate?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Lark.
Yes.
Dowling.
No.
Winters.
Yes.
Thank you. Item six is new business. We don't have anything that would qualify as new business. Item seven is to adjourn. And now, thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
I'll call to order the regular Alba Utility Authority meeting. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lark.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons. Bowman.
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 16th, 2024, and the emergency meeting on January 25th, 2024. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $393,715.44 and payroll expenses of $59,480.16.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You're testing me. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Winters to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to approve the Locust Street Waterline Project bid from Jackson Civil of $193,782.5 as the lowest and best bid and authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. We opened the bids last week, last week, I think, and we had a very competitive field of bidders, because we, I think we had six, six companies bid, five or six anyway.
Four, two, six.
Four, five, six, yeah.
And then we had another bid on the other project, which we'll talk about next on the agenda, but the prices varied quite a bit. The lowest bid actually did not have a bond and so we weren't able to take, recommend the lowest bid. But the Jackson Civil bid is, and you'll see in your, there's a letter of recommendation packet from Myers Engineering, but they would be the lowest bid and there's nothing that would disqualify them from being a competent contractor for the project.
Has Myers done worked with them?
Is this section, I mean, we bid to have the city do the work, you know, it's a just, it's totally separate part of Locust that we bid, we discussed before, and this is not something we discussed previously.
And we have, this was part of the original CBDG grant we tried to get to go from 7th all the way through 11th. We didn't get that, so then the city decided to do 7th, 8th on our own. But as part of this new OWRB loan we took out, this was part of that plan to go ahead and finish out Locust Street. So I'm gonna try to do it early so we'll be tying with the artwork, get that done. Start first, definitely.
No, and the only thing I would add to that is we would, we would like to go eventually further up, you know, Locust Street, but at the point where we're terminating this project, the line transitions north and goes the rest of the way west through the alley. So this would take care of the water line that is on the street east.
This terminates at 10th Street as far as you're.
Let it go.
And once, so they would do the tie-in and once they're tied in, we can start fixing Locust Street that's torn up, correct? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Locust Water, Locust Street Waterline Project bid from Jackson Civil of $193,782.5 as the lowest, best bid and to authorize the mayor or city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the Locust Street Waterline Project bid from Jackson Civil, $193,782.5 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Thank you. Item six is discussion and action to reject the single bid for the Wellfield Telemetry Project and authorize the city business manager to rebid the project. We had, not, this wasn't competitive. We got one, one bid and it was about double what we had between the engineers, double what the engineers had estimated for this project and what we had maybe ascertained from speaking to some other vendors that the project would cost. And with that being the case, we feel like we need to rebid this to get a more competitive process.
I'd motion to reject the single bid for the Wellfield Telemetry Project and authorize the city business manager to rebid the project.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mr. Bowman to reject the single bid for the Wellfield Telemetry Project and authorize the business manager to rebid. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
All right. Item seven is new business. We don't have anything that would qualify as new business, to my knowledge. And item eight is to adjourn. And we will return from recess to item eight on the city council agenda. Item A is discussion and action to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-004, resolution canvassing the results of the special election conducted in the city of Alba, Oklahoma on the 13th day of February 2024, granting franchise to One Gas Inc. The election last week was, there's the results, 90 to 10, 151 votes. And so this basically says we accept them.
I'd make a motion to approve City of Alba Resolution 2024-004, resolution canvassing the results of the special election conducting the city of Alba, Oklahoma on the 13th day of February 2024, granting a franchise to One Gas Inc.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve Resolution 2024-004 as stated in the agenda, granting a franchise to One Gas Inc. Is there any further discussion?
Really low voter turnout.
You would think. McAllister had a city council election with 51 voters.
McAllister had one or 50?
Wow. 51 or 54. It wasn't 60. But. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
And we are the only municipality in the state of Oklahoma that has a zero fee franchise agreement with Oklahoma Natural G. Item nine, discussion and action to approve the receipt of the Municipal Road Drilling Activity Funds, MRDAF, for the project to resurface the roadways on Flynn Street from Highway 281 East to County Road 6, this should be 460, right?
Yes, 460. I'm sorry. There, there goes the letter, says 640, so I hadn't changed, I hadn't changed here. But the letter on the board says 460.
Okay. And south on County Road 460 to Highway 64 in the amount of $100,000 and authorize the city business manager to solicit sealed bids for the project. So this is, and Steve can weigh in on this, but this is a grant that, that Dr. Whitehead sought back, gosh, it's been several months ago. And we did receive notification of the award. It comes with a $33,000 match for the city of Alba, which we have in our street and alley fund, plus some. But we would take the match out of the street and alley fund and be able to contract the project done. Basically, it's gonna go from Roger Mans's Car Wash to Fechner Supply and Bill Johnson's there and then south to the Bull. And that's what it is. And this, this will be a turnkey project that is bid, so.
I'd motion to approve the receipt of the Municipal Road Drilling Activity Funds for the project as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the receipt of the MRDAF funds for the project to resurface the roadways from Flynn to 460 and 460 to 64 as stated in the agenda, $100,000 and authorize the manager to solicit the bids. Is there any further discussion?
Is that a, sorry, go ahead.
Is there any planning for the arena, I mean, in doing this?
No, that was what it's.
It's just a period of recent.
We had, we had, so we had to come up with places around town that had always been damaged by oil field activity. So this stretch right here is one. The other stretches are Harper from basically where the county stopped putting down the chip seal, out all the way over Skyline where there was a lot of oil activity there. We gotta work for this particular project here, for this particular grant. Next year we're gonna keep applying for other places where oil field traffic is damaged on roads.
So that's not, that's a city road, then that's not the county's road?
That's our road.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote. Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 10 is Discussion and Action to Approve City of Alva Resolution 2024-005 Resolution to Approve Municipal Road Drilling Activity Funds Grant in the Amount of $100,000 to Execute That Certain Project Application with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. So this is the actual telling the state that we're gonna do it.
I'll motion to approve Resolution 2024-005.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve Resolution 2024-005, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 11 is Discussion and Action to Approve the OEDA Invoice to Cover Expenses Related to the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, in the Amount of $40,000. The capital improvement plan that Gail Thomas worked with us to, that we approved at the last council meeting, the last regular council meeting, this is over Steve's spending limit, so this authorizes payment of that invoice, because we approved it back in 2022, but we can't obligate the future councils, so we gotta approve the invoice again. This is 100% refundable and will be refunded, Steve, what did you say?
CBGG? So Gail gets this, and the resolution's last month? She'll turn all that into CBGG, and then they'll pay us.
I would make a motion to approve the OEDA invoice to cover expenses really to the five-year capital improvement plan in the Amount of $40,000.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mr. Bowman to approve the OEDA invoice for $40,000 for this capital improvement plan. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item 12 is Discussion and Action on the Appointment of City Representatives to Negotiate on the City's behalf for fiscal year 2024-2025 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. Union President, elected president, whatever, Derek, yeah, he's president, has requested that we begin negotiations, and so we typically, for the last several years, have appointed a council committee to, of two people, to work with Mr. Nussor, or whoever the union president has been, the mayor and the manager, to bring information back to the City Council. I will say, not, I'm not in favor of this, but in prior years past, the city has also participated with outside counsel in those negotiations as well, so. But that's expensive.
Mr. Bowman, Mrs. Beer, you guys did it last year, you good with doing it again this year?
Yeah.
I would make the motion to appoint Mr. Bowman and Mrs. Beer as the City Council Representatives for negotiations with the IAFF Local 3782 Union.
Second. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Dr. Lahr to appoint Greg Bowman and Sadie Beer as the City's Representatives to Negotiate on the City's behalf for the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
All right. And Item 13 is Discussion and Action to Enter Into Executive Session Pursuant to 25OS 307B3 to Discuss the Purchase of Real Property.
And make the motion to enter executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?